Sixteen, so we're running a little late, but I appreciate everybody's patience with us, okay? Like the invocation by Councilman Nathan Martin, and also please in the invocation, please include your father that's in the hospital tonight. So if you'd please stand in the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Kevin Dorn.
Thank you, Raymond. Fathers, we gather tonight on this evening, we are grateful for the opportunity to exercise this practice of self-governance. Not every nation, not every people have this gift, and we do not want to take it for granted. So we ask you for wisdom on the matters before us, and we pray that you'll comfort our hearts with the things that are heavy upon our minds, or I'm not the only one with a sick family member. So I pray that all of us will be able to trust you and find that gift of healing flowing to them. As we celebrated our veterans yesterday, we give you thanks for their service and the example that they've shown us of what it truly means to put others above self and to sacrifice their own desires, and perhaps even that ultimate sacrifice. We give you thanks for them and pray your blessings on them. And on this, our first meeting of our new mayor bishop, we ask your special blessing on him as he leads us into the future that he designed. We thank you that you cause all things to work together for good to those who love you, to those who are calling for your purpose. I give you thanks for all these things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Dorn.
Present.
Councilman McGregor.
Here.
Councilman Boucher.
Here.
Councilman Mark.
Thank you, Chris. Item number five, if there's any public comment on any agenda item, please stand or raise your hand at that time, and you will be recognized. Also, if you have any cell phones, please place them on silent or vibrated this time. Moving right along. Item number six, accept the minutes of the October 8th regular council meeting is published.
So move.
Have a motion. I need a second. Get a second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Any nays, that motion carries. Item number seven, accept the minutes of the October 30th special council meeting is published. Got a motion, second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Any nays, motion carries. Item number eight, the financial report. Mr. Humphries.
Mayor, council members, the financial report, our beginning balance, our checking account was $144,000. That deposits of $2,797,918, withdrawals of $3,310,985, results in an ending balance of $1,231,576. Sales tax collections again were up this month. Our city taxes was $1,49,135. Our city's half percent sales tax was $262,284, and the Port Parish portions was $146,744. For our total tax collections for the month of October, collected in October was $1,458,193. Comparison to last year was $1,383,153. We had a 5.43% increase, or in other words, $75,040 increase over us last year. If you'll look at the graph at the bottom of the screen, at the bottom of the table, you will see that each year, we've been having a consecutive growth for this month. 2020 was a big growth during that year, but other than that, we've been a continuous growth on our sales tax collections. Occupational license, we were up considerably this month because a lot of some occupational license renewals came in. So we had $4,741 of occupational license compared to October 23, $366. And we're up 15.71% on those occupational license collections here today.
Motion to accept the report from Mr. Humphries?
Okay, I got a motion to accept the financial report that's read by Mr. David Humphries. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any nays, that motion carries. Thank you, David. Item number nine, presentation by Cindy Rushing and also Ms. Cindy Sespeva, Rapids Parish School Board, early childhood direction on available scholarships for Rapids Parish residents, children aged three and under. Ladies?
Good evening. Thank you for the invitation to come and present. Oh. Are we, are we good? Okay. So we are, so I am the early childhood director for Rapids Parish School Board. We have what's called the Rapids Early Childhood Network, which is for our children birth to five in promoting the qual- high-quality experiences for children birth to five in Rapids Parish schools. We also are, we also have a Rapids Ready Start Network, and our chair is Frank Jackson, who is here tonight with us. So if you don't know, early childhood education is one of the most important things that we do in Rapids Parish, because I'm, we're going to show you a slide later, 90% of a child's brain is developed by age five. So the most critical part of that is that, is the birth to three. So we have worked exhaustively for the last 10 years to really provide families that have young children with a quality early learning experience. We work with 35 childcare centers in Rapids. We also work with Head Start and Pre-K to, to improve the quality of the experiences they receive. And if you don't know, the, the tuition for our early learning centers or our childcare centers is about $12,000 a year, almost as much as a college education. And so one of the things that we have always looked at is quality and access. And so with access, we don't have enough monies in Rapids Parish to be able to serve all the children that are at risk that their families can't afford that tuition. And so we have the waived tuition program, and we have collaborative partners with the Rapids Foundation, the Orchard Foundation, with the Rotary Club of Alexandria, and then with Rapids Parish School Board and with our rec and group. And so the state has given local, has given funding that we can match to pull into Rapids to help those families that don't have the money to send them to a quality childcare. They don't have the funding sometimes to be able to do that, so they don't, so they're also not in the workforce. So this program is twofold. It's to help that workforce to improve, help the family improve the quality of their life, and give those early babies, birth to three, the opportunity to get the skills that they need to enter, to enter school ready. So the Rapids Foundation, so we started this program last year about this time. The Rapids Foundation gave us a $1.3 million grant, and then they also gave us funding of $500,000 to, to match any of the monies that we raised locally. And locally, last year, we raised $500,000, and we're starting that process. That process starts over every year, so we're right in the middle of our campaign. The Rotary Club made it their signature project last year. We had over 50 community members that participated. And so because of the, because of how our community responded, for every dollar that was donated, we received $4. And so that was a pretty good investment. So we raised $400.7 million. We have 300 to 350 scholarships that we are awarding right now for children birth to three, and those scholarships are waived tuition, they're free to families that qualify. And the families either have to be working at least 20 hours a week or are also in job training. And so it gives those families an opportunity to, to improve the quality. As I said, we have 35 childcare centers, and it's an easy application process, and you just apply online at rapidesearlychildhoodnetwork.com, and it gives you the application to go through. And the page that's probably the most important is this one, where it says 90% of a child's brain occurs by age five. So if 95% of the child's brain is, is, is there, it's already ready, then the, the years that are between that are the ones that are most critical for language, for literacy, for cognitive, for social, hearing and, hearing and vision. All of the things that we need to make sure that we are doing for our children that are good are done in those early years. And so we are just, I mean, how can you help spread the word? We have some brochures that we can leave. You can go to our website and get more information, but there are families, you probably know a family right now, that would qualify for this program. And all they have to do is, is submit an application. It goes to one special person, and that person is their contact from the beginning to the end to qualify them. Sometimes those families can qualify in one day if they provide all the information that we need. And so, you know, right now, we are taking applications. We're also taking applications for this year, but we're also working on donations and that local funding for next year. And we have to submit that number at the end of January, and then the state will approve it in June and match whatever local dollars we have raised. And so it's really a, a big deal, and we wanted to show you a little video. We won the We Went Together Award, which was at, by Crest, and it was, we were nominated for a busy award. And it really shows you where we are, all the players that had a part in it, and why we are so passionate about making sure that if a family and a child needs to be in some kind of learning environment to really help them get those skills that they need to enter school ready, we are available to help that. Help there, please.
If people are ever asked, why do you choose to live in central Louisiana, the number one answer has always been, it's a great place to raise a family.
Crest Industries is excited to present the We Went Together Award to the Rapids Early Childhood Network. This one was easy for us to award. The statistics dictate if children don't have foundational knowledge and foundational education by third grade, that we can lose them. As productive citizens, we've got to do better for our kids and our community. So the Rapids Foundation, individuals, the business community, the Rapids Parish School Board, the Rotary Club, and State of Louisiana and others, just, just a menagerie of different groups decided we've got to be better, and we've got to invest in these kids, and we've got to make our society better to create transnational change.
The response of the community, that's what makes it so gratifying, that they, that they understood our mission. They saw our vision. They knew what we wanted to do and made it possible for us to offer scholarships for over 300 children this year.
It started with Reckon. Rapids Foundation put the grant challenge down. Rapids Parish School Board said, we're on this thing big time. And then our Rotary Club.
The Rapids Early Childcare Network is this conglomerate of all the daycare centers, all these different entities that provide these foundational skills for our children. We have some of the best teachers working in these programs and assistants that what, what they're able to do is create a culture in our community where our parents know, I have somewhere to send my children. I have a safe and secure place that also lays a strong foundation for students.
When we started the ECE funding, we had great community partners that come out. I have to say, a huge commendation to the Rapids Foundation, because they provided scholarships in the amount of 1.3 million. And then they also matched efforts at the local level. Everybody wants their child to get the best that they can. And sometimes they can't afford that, but because of our scholarship program, we're able to offer those parents scholarships.
You know, $4.8 million. 300 babies. 300 babies are going to be loved, and their brains filled up to be great citizens in the future. That fires me up. We can still prove to people that Rapids Parish is a great place to raise a family. Let's prove to the world that Rapids Parish truly is better together.
Thank you so much. And we do have some brochures that we'll leave at the back in case you would like to take one when you leave. If you ever have any, if you need to contact anyone, you can always call Rapids Parish School Board and ask for me or Cindy or go on the website. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rushing, Ms. Sespeva. Appreciate y'all coming here today before, I want to say the police here, but no, it's the city council. I got to change my terminology a little bit. But once again, thank you, ladies. And it's all about working together with the new municipalities, the school board, and everybody on the same page of music, it would go so much better. Once again, thank you, ladies, okay? Moving right along. Item number 10, recognize, oh, we're going to table item number 10.
I'll make a motion.
For the chief.
I'll make a motion to table item.
We're going to table item 10, got a motion, second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Any nays, that motion carries. Item number 11, old business condemnation hearing.
It was Kristin.
Kristin, yes, sir. Thank you. Item number 11, condemnation hearing, continuations for multifamily home near the corner of Bell Street and Mills Road, described as .56 acres in southeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 7, Township 4 North, Range 1 East, 215 feet by 114, owned by Corinne H. Rowland, E.T.A.L. I need a motion for to go into discussion about it. So move. I need a motion, second. Discussion, Mr. Davy.
Mayor and council. This is a, this is a condemnation hearing, and Mr. Rowland had requested consideration of, he wasn't able to attend, and asked that the matter, the hearing be delayed. And I think we delayed it, Mr. Workman, to this meeting. Is there anyone here representing Rowlands on this? Mayor, the, we have a letter that we received from J. Rowland Enterprises, and he says that the, and we know the Rowlands, he says they're a longstanding family in this community, fourth generation native of Pineville. And he claims that they've started to clean up the property, and they've removed some trees, and he has getting some bids on fixing it up. And Mayor, I, I haven't seen anybody, and I don't know if Mr. Workman, has anybody seen recently since this, because the property is in pretty bad shape. And I really need, I need to see if Mr. Rowland comes here and tells us what he's planning to do or is doing, because we have the condemnation hearing, and, and this is as bad as a piece of property as we've had. So I don't, I'd really need Mr. Rowland, because he's to come and talk to us, tell us what he's doing here. And his letter is nice, but I hadn't seen it, and I don't know what he's really doing, and whether he says, I'm going to fix some repairs, I'm going to do some siding, and I'm gonna. But I think we, like we've asked other people, tell us, do you have a contractor? How much do you plan to spend? So Mayor, again, very nice letter, but until, I really think we need to hear from Mr. Rowland. I'd ask that y'all table it again, and we see if he can come. If not, then I'm going to have to ask y'all to consider condemning it like we've done the 30 other properties in the city that were in this condition.
Okay. Mr. Davy, I spoke to Mr. Rowland this weekend on the phone. He called me. He was having dialysis and everything. He did apply for a permit, so hopefully the building inspector, Mr. Kenny Andrews, will meet with the Rowland family and see what their contentions are on rehabbing a facility or, you know, having it condemned at this time. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a 30-day extension for a 105 Bell Road.
I'll make a motion to extend Mr. Rowland's condemnation for 30 days.
Okay, I have a second. I have a second. Discussion. All in favor say aye. Any nays, that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Davy. Item number 12, hear from the zoning regarding a petition, annexation of .97 acres of property located at 2514 Donahue Ferry Road, belonging to Darren and Mary Lee Green, to be a zone for R1. Mr. Davy, have a motion, second. Mr. Davy.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the zoning commission met this afternoon preceding this meeting. First, we addressed three items. The first item we addressed was a petition from Mr. Darren Green related to the annexation of residential property that he lives in. Lives at 2514 Donahue Ferry Road. He wants to come inside the city limits under R1. Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the zoning commission for Mr. Darren.
We already have a motion in a second.
Yeah, that's fine.
We already got a motion, so it's just discussion right now, so.
Do we have to make a motion on each individual item?
Yes.
Right? That's how we've always done it?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. That's fine.
I thought I moved in your second, or Nathan said it.
We're going to do a roll call here. But is there any discussion on this item right now?
No, I mean, it's something that needs to be done, you know, to, to right a wrong, you know, and, and have them come in, you know.
And also, this is helping us square up our city limits, because as you go down Donahue Ferry Road, it's like this house is in, this house is out. This is helping us for police and fire and garbage and trash and more. It, it helps out the entire city.
Yeah.
So roll call vote, please.
Councilman Dorn?
Yes.
Councilman McGregor?
Yes.
Councilman Boucher?
Yes.
Councilman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Next item is a petition from the Inner City Revitalization Corporation related to property along Dillon Street, principally located on 230 Dillon Street. But at the, during the hearing, it was, we realized that the property, the entire property that the inner city revitalization people own on that street is Zone C3, and we took this as an opportunity to correct it up. And they agreed to change the petition to the whole property that they own to go to R2, as well as, and a related to a variance on the corner lot between Dillon and Sanders Street, where the side lot setback would go from 20 foot to 12 foot. It's our, the zoning commission approved that request with that understanding.
Okay. So guys, on item number 13, we just heard from the zoning commission chairman and everything, is to approve the setback for 230 Dillon Street and on, and it butts up to Sanders Street. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Second. Got a second. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, you know, just to explain myself here, because during the zoning commission meeting, I got up there and I said, I'm usually against all variances. And that, and that is true, unless they make perfect sense, you know, or at least really good sense. I don't know if anything's perfect. There's only one thing perfect in this world. But, you know, what you talked about in the zoning commission was brought forward during the meeting, is that this particular piece of property is on the corner lot with a big incline.
A big topographical change in elevation, which change, and, and in most zoning ordinance, it has a paragraph that variances have to be related. You have to do the least variance that is necessary, and it usually has to be related to something that's beyond the petitioner's control. And I think that's the case here.
So as I, as I listened, you know, that makes perfect sense in what's going to, you know, happen to improve Dillon Street, you know, with these properties, you know, I don't think I can. You know, I don't think I can go against this variance. So, you know, that's the reasoning why I actually won't vote for a variance.
And Mr. Boucher, that is why I danced all over again to here and trying to figure out what I was gonna do when you showed up.
And also, Ms. Dasher didn't go into details on it, but we have to applaud the efforts of the revitalization. Because they've not only done it on this side of the river, they've done it elsewhere too. When you have wealth-challenged communities where it'd be hard for an investor to come in and yield a profit. Mr. Davie, I know you've done some work on some of these homes as well, some charity work or any kind of donations. But these are for first-time home buyers. Where people will go to the classes and they'll help get their credit where it needs to be and do some budgeting and things of this nature. And the answer to where we was talking about that, the cost of affordable housing, this is affordable homeownership. There's some first-time subsidy dollars if I'm speaking correctly. And these home will be brick, they'll, they'll be, there's no shortcuts. And what they'll do is they will be in the rim usually less costly than rent. I've had the privilege, God allowed me the opportunity to do, be a part of it in a few other communities with Mr. Spears. And I think, you know, if we're to ever talk about revitalization of communities, we're gonna go from where it was five 30-year-old or mobile home to five brick homes. So I just have to applaud those efforts. Because it, it's a lot of hard work to make this happen. Thank you, Ms. Dasher.
Thank you, just going for them kind words. And once again, I was born and raised on Sanders Street and stuff. And I applaud you for purchasing this property, cleaning up the entire neighborhood there. And once again, this is homeowners, it's not rental properties. This is a brand-new slab and brick house built to code for these great people. And I'm excited about it, okay? Cleaning up downtown Pineville around the churches and everything. And when people drive to church every day, you feel so much better when you drive by a nice, clean yard and well-maintained properties and stuff. Thank you again. So with that said, I need a roll call vote on item number 13.
Councilor Dorn?
Yes.
Councilman Frederick?
Yes.
Councilman Boucher?
Yes.
Councilman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you, that item passed. Congratulations, ladies. Thank you. Moving right along, item number 14, hear from the zoning regarding a petition of variance of mobile home overlaying ordinance to allow the mobile home to be placed on lot located at 417 Hickory, Hickory Street. Belonging to Hernandez Homes LLC. Mr. Davie.
Mayor, after the zoning commission heard the petition from Mr. Leatherman and after a robust discussion about what we needed to do. He offered to withdraw his petition and some administrative homework that we're gonna have to do. To try to true up our mobile home ordinance as well as our mobile home overlay district ordinance to try to make it a better fit for 2024, 2025. So Mayor, it was withdrawn.
Okay. Item number 14 was withdrawn, so there should be no action needed on it, okay? Moving right along, item number 15, consider adoption of ordinance to amend and modify the code of ordinance by adding chapter six, article three, section six dash five four to establish a community cap program.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, I got a second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Roll call vote, please.
Councilor Dorn?
Yes.
Councilman Frederick?
Yes.
Councilman Boucher?
Yes.
Councilman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you. That item passed. Moving right along to new business, item number 16. Nominate and elect a mayor pro temp to finish the term of fiscal year 2024, 2025. I need a nomination from the council for a mayor pro temp.
Mayor, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, council.
I like to have the privilege of nominating Councilwoman Christie Frederick.
I'll second it. Okay, I have a nomination of Ms. Christie Frederick. Any other nominees? Motion to close nominees. Roll call vote, please.
Councilor Dorn?
Yes.
Councilman Frederick?
Yes.
Councilman Boucher?
Yes.
Councilman Mark?
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you. Item number 17, approve a resolution to amend account information for the accounts held by Red River Bank. And what this includes is calling a signature card for the mayor. I need a motion. So move. Got a motion. Need a second.
Second.
Second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Before, before you vote on that, is that just for you or can we tie in mayor pro temp on that? Does she have to do any signatures as well?
And, and mayor protein.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Both of us.
Yes.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any nays, that motion carries. Thank you. Item number 18, consider a resolution calling for an appointment of a interim District One council member in accordance with LARS 18 dot 602.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that Randy O'Neil be appointed as the interim District One council member.
Okay, I have a nomination of Mr. Randy O'Neil. Any other nominations? If not, I need a second for Mr. Randy O'Neil. I got a motion, second.
And if I can make a comment, Mayor, we had a few folks that were, had offered themselves and I had the opportunity to speak, including with a gentleman that I didn't, didn't know before, but I very much enjoyed meeting him. And I'm grateful that there are several that were willing. But I think that Mr. O'Neil with his frequent visits here, often being a presence at the meetings over the years. And certainly, perhaps even because of the originator of the Pineville Proud hashtag, I think I'm excited to nominate him.
Okay, fantastic. All right, roll call vote, please, on Mr. Randy O'Neil to represent District One as a council member.
Councilor Dorn?
Yes.
Councilman Frederick?
Yes.
Councilman Boucher?
Yes.
Councilman Mark?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Randy O'Neil. Mr. O'Neil, if you'd come forward, also Judge Gary Hayes, would you come swear Randy in? Put the robe on, Gary. And while we're waiting on Judge Hayes, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Mary Galloway for her years of service here representing District One here in downtown Pineville. And once a council member, you're always a council member. It's, it's, it's in your blood, it's in your heart and your mind. And once again, Mary.
I, Randy Glenn O'Neil. I, Randy Glenn O'Neil. Do solemnly swear that I will support. Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the United States. And the Constitution and laws of this state. And the Constitution and laws of this state. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge. That I will faithfully and impartially discharge. And perform all the duties incumbent on me. And perform all the duties incumbent on me. As Pineville City Councilperson, District One. As Pineville City Councilperson, District One. According to the best of my ability and understanding. According to the best of my ability and understanding. So help me God. So help me God.
Once again, Mr. Randy O'Neil, congratulations and welcome aboard. Looking forward to working with you. Moving right along, item number 19, approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute in all documents related to enter a lease purchase agreement with governmental capital corporation for the purchase of a, finance a license plate reader, vehicles, heavy equipment and other equipment.
I'll make that motion.
I got a motion. I need a second.
That's in our capital.
Discussion.
I believe that's a capital budget item.
Yeah, it is. And it is a purchase we're making, okay? All in favor, say aye. Any nays, that motion carries. Moving right along, item number 20, approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and enter into a corporate endeavor agreement with North Rapids Crime Stoppers Incorporated. So move. I have a motion, I have a second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any nays, that motion carries.
Hey, Chief.
Yes, yes.
Hey, Chief, how's that going?
Sir, how's that crime stopper?
It's going great. This will lay over for 30 days, we'll pass it hopefully at the December meeting. And then we will move the money over. One of our board members is actually here behind the police, the deputy chief. They are hitting the ground ready to start expending funds in January as soon as we make the transfer. So everything's going great. I will say that the, the board has done a great job of, it's been a lot of, over the past couple of months, a lot of little things that had to get in place. And so they have done a great job of putting those things in place for us to be ready in January.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. The Marshals, yes. And since we're talking about crime stoppers and everything, I want to let y'all know the mayor and the entire council looks forward to working with the Marshals Office, Marshal Rashaw. And also Judge Gary Hayes, you and your staff. And each and every department head, we look forward to working with each other, okay? And if y'all have any questions, call me day or night. My door's always open or we can go eat lunch or we can meet wherever you need to, okay?
Just one thing on this. So the judge, and I'll give credit where it is, the judge did, did, was the person that came to us about moving the money and doing that. So kudos to Judge Hayes for that. But Representative Mike Johnson, we had to get some special legislation done, as y'all remember. And he was available to author that legislation for us at the last minute, get it through that we needed to, to push it through the House all the way to get the governor to sign it. So it's been an effort for everybody involved in it.
I'll make sure that I give him a call and thank him because, I mean, Northside Crime Stoppers is gonna be huge.
Yeah. Can I, real question?
Yes.
Because I'm kinda late to the party on this one, but I do recall, I guess it was several months ago at a council meeting, this came up. So this is aside from anything going on across the river.
Correct, this is a separate, independent organization just for North Rapids, us involved.
Fantastic. Good job. Kudos.
Awesome. Thank you. Next item on your agenda is item number 21. Approve a resolution awarding the contract for auxiliary power generators and switchgear improvements at primary water wells, Lakeview Street and O'Neil Street. And booster pump stations improvements at Janet Drive, Lakeview Street and O'Neil Street. And authorize the mayor to execute contract change orders and other documents related to this project between the city of Pineville and the selected bidder. So move. I have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Got a second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any nays, that motion carries. Thank you. Item number 22, approve of resolution declaring.
So, Councilman Boucher said that Randy should have made that motion since it was O'Neil Street.
O'Neil Street.
I was waiting for you to jump on that one, Randy.
They already named a subdivision after me.
Already named a street after me, thank you.
Actually, the subdivision ain't after me. Lano, which is O'Neil backwards. Grandfather developed.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Fantastic.
Al, Ruben, Al and all those.
Al, Ruben.
Okay, item number 22, approve a resolution declaring several items of the Pineville Police Department for purpose of selling, donating, auctioning or disposal as necessary. I need a motion, got a motion.
Second.
Got a second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any nays, motion carries. Before we go into item number 23, executive session, I'd like, we, not for sure how long we're gonna be in the executive session. But if there's any other business to become for the mayor and the council members, please stand and raise your hand at this time. If not, we're gonna go into executive session regarding pending EEOC complaint filed by Ms. Brittany Poston. Yes, sir.
My name is Mr. Cornelius Lawson White Jr. I live at 3638 10th Street in Alexandria, Louisiana, 71302. My phone number is area code 318-446-6934. We haven't, I wanted to thank first all the veterans. I'm glad Big Nate had mentioned the veterans and stuff. We've got a councilman over there named Reddicks Washington. His mom's been rushed to the hospital, so please pray for Reddicks Washington and his mom too. And I'm sorry to hear about yours, Big Nate, you're dead and everything. You know, I spent 15 years as a military police officer at Camp Beauregard. I've spent half my life in Pineville and half my life in Alexandria. But the way y'all run your city council and everything, y'all respect the citizens and stuff. You can come ask questions. The mayor, I think I might be locked up next time, so this may be the last time. I do appreciate y'all, you don't try to beat down your citizens. You can ask questions and stuff. Everybody knows that I follow the law, I follow rules, I believe in the Constitution. Our soldiers risk their lives daily and police officers also risk their lives defending the Constitution. But across the river, we have no constitutional rights. And like I said, if any y'all can come over there, pray for us, we need Pineville Patriots, Pineville Pistols. Because there's a lot of bad things happening over there. They don't, they're not reporting that. But if you go to Urban Cash, you'll see what's happening over there. There's gunfire, automatic gunfire. And like I said, I've been trained as a military police officer. And it's starting to spread over here to Pineville. So I'm just telling y'all, I'm glad y'all got that where y'all have y'all's own crime stoppers and stuff. So that's a great thing too. But I believe in progressive Pineville, I believe in patriot Pineville, red, white and blue Pineville. Pineville is a place like no other. And I hope you will support the Ash Trojans, because I graduated from Ash, although I spent time at Pineville Elementary when my mom was teaching with Faith Ford's mom. But Ash is 10-0, maybe they'll, yes, sir. Maybe they'll make it to the Superdome, they got a home field advantage. But God bless you, Pineville, and God bless America. And thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other business to come before us?
Just one thing, I want to thank Councilwoman Galloway. I think we've served together, what, 16 years? And, you know, it was, you were there and then you left.
And she took its place.
Councilwoman Galloway served with me longer than you did.
Yeah.
You know, she's, she's a close friend, I consider a friend. We probably talked more than you, than you and her did. You know, we talked two or three times a day. You know, I ride, I see something, I call her, she rides, she sees something, she calls me. And I'm gonna miss her, but I'm sure Mr. James will do an excellent job. He has big shoes to fill. You know, you just got a lot of moving to do to, because Councilwoman Galloway knows everybody. And if she, if she don't know him, she ran across him. And if she hadn't ran across him, she can to.
Yes.
So at the end of the day, we're gonna miss her. Really appreciate, sir, yeah. Appreciate serving with her, but more than that, I appreciate her friendship.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we wrap up. First and foremost, thank you, Councilwoman Galloway, for your support to fill this spot. This is your spot. I'm not just gonna sit here and shut up, but.
Those who know me for the last 36 years know that that's not speaking, it's not my forte. That being said, I'm going to have her ear. And we're probably going to be talking daily. And I look forward to that. I've got a lot to learn. And born, born and raised in Pineville, I know some O'Neils are smiling down from up there right now. But I'd also like to say to this council and to our mayor, thank you. Thank you for your support to do this. I know it's 17 months, but when I came in here, what, two months ago? And had my say and when I came in in support of Joe a couple of weeks ago, I meant what I said. We can make Pineville proud again. I'm still proud of my little city by the river. And Mr. Cornelius, this may be the only time I say this. I'm a Pineville Rebel through and through. But I do wish the Ash Trojans all the best. The only central Louisiana high school football team to win a state championship were the Pineville Rebels. If somebody's going to take that from us, let it be the Ash Trojans. So I do wish them the best. I'm anxious and time to hit the ground running, but so thank y'all, appreciate the support. Thank you, Ms. O'Neil.
Randy, Randy, they can never take it away.
Randy, Randy, they can never take it away, man. Was it nineteen sixty-three state championship? Was it sixty-three?
Nineteen sixty.
Sixty?
Nineteen sixty.
Been a long time since somebody's won a championship. Ash had the best chance, but in twenty, during COVID, playing up at Northwestern State, so I'm all for the Trojans going to get and bringing a state championship back here soon.
Absolutely. Right. Okay, any other business to come before the mayor and the council? If not, I need a roll call vote to go into executive session. Motion, so moved. Motion, second, roll call vote.
Councilman Lillie.
Yeah.
Councilman Doran.
Yes.
Councilman Frederick.
Yes.
Councilman Boucher.
Yes.
Councilman Martin.
Yes.
All right, let's go into executive session. Thank you for coming.
All right, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
Motion second discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
You in days? You want roll call? Okay. All right, roll call, please come out unanimous.
Councilor O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilor Dorn.
Yes.
Councilor McFerrer.
Yes.
Councilor Boucher.
Yes.
Councilor Martin Nattin.
He's absent, let the record state.
His father's sick in hospital.
He's in hospital. Head to lead it, yes. Okay, so we're now out of executive session. Is there any other business before to get the council? If not, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.